Good evening. Welcome to the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals. Sorry for the delay. We had Zoom technology issues. Could you please sit down and, did you sign in, sir?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I know this guy. In any event, first on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes from January 29. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second also? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is an application at Zero Colgate Road. Patricia Connelly, the appellant, has appealed the decision of the zoning board of the building inspector. This was heard initially at the January meeting. It is now, there's an application for a request for continuance to, do you want to speak to the request for continuance? Sure, coming up. And please introduce yourself to the board.
Evening to the chair, evening to the board. Jeff Eugino, Gellerman Cabral in Norwood. We do represent the applicant, the appellant, Zero Colgate Road property. We sought a continuance to do some more examination, to do some more title background work on this, and we're working with an engineer and a title examiner to do that work. And so for that reason, I don't think we're up against any deadlines for the board to act. We'd ask for a continuance to the next year.
Okay, motion to approve continuance to March 20th at 7:30? Everybody?
Yeah, I just would point out that I think our hundred day clock expires March 28th. So I think we may need to extend that.
I'm happy to put it in writing to give the board additional time as long as it needs to waive that requirement.
You had acknowledged it when you asked for the continuance. We're aware of that, and as we get closer, if it gets closer, we'll need that.
Absolutely happy to.
So a written request to extend the time. And how long do you want to extend that deadline? Another 60 days? Do it in another 60 days.
Yes, I will do that. Happy to do it.
All right. So continue to March 20th, 7:30 pending your delivery of an extension for an additional 60 days past the expiry date. I think you quoted it as March 27th, right?
The next meeting is March.
No, 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 no. The extension would go to May 27th.
And also, comments will be due is March 11th for that meeting.
Understood.
Okay, continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is continuation of 378 Manning Street. This is Nick Kosolov and Megan Waldervogel. There's an application for an appeal from the building inspector's decision issued to Arthur Elzon dated November 19th, 2024, for reconstruction of a two-family home at 378 Manning Street. We took a lot of testimony last, do you want to come to the middle?
Well, I figured that the.
I can't see you there. This is, this is very estranged, but it's all right. I can turn left, but it's a departure.
Well, I figured in this case, the board might like to have the other side at the table as well.
Well, we can also ask you to take other chairs. But in any event, so the point of this, we've taken a lot of testimony. So if you've already testified and given your position, if there's something new, we'd entertain it. If it's repeating what has already been brought up before, let's not. It's a long meeting. We went well after 10 o'clock last, last time. We're hoping that something has materialized over the last month. We have some written comments, and if the neighbors or abutters or residents are not here, I'll read those comments in the record. So Mr. Jenta.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Jenta Jr., appearing on behalf of the appellant for appealing the decision of the billing commissioner. And so I'm going to reference, I know the board has received some materials from the applicant, and I will reference those just because I think that's probably what's most germane now, because most of what we've already submitted stands on its own. There's really just a couple of rebuttal points and really one new point. So, so the developer in this case has, was tasked or was presented with the challenge of whether or not this property was in fact a lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family property, or whether or not the use as such had been abandoned or discontinued for two or more years, which would, under the bylaw, result in an abandonment of the use. We had presented a chronology or a list of occupants based on poll tax records, street lists and the census records and the like for the period of 2003 through 2024, and there were quite a few substantial gaps in that record. The developer has since submitted several documents and information to fill in some of those gaps. And I will start out by recognizing that there were some leases submitted, and the leases do seem taking them at face value, that they, that they are what they say they are and so on, that they fill in some of the gaps. However, even with the leases that were submitted, there are still some gaps remaining, most notably the years 2007 and 2008, as well as 2011 through 2024. Now, I note for those years, it does appear that one unit was occupied, but it's the second unit that is called, that gets called into question. In addition, while they were working on their bit to fill in some gaps, we also did a little bit of additional research. And, and basically going back an additional 10 years to 1993, it appears that there were two additional gaps, the years of 2000 and 2001. And I do have here this evening multiple copies of a, basically an updated occupancy list that goes back to 1993, showing those two years as gap.
You would give it to.
Sure. And this file there.
For us.
Now, with respect to some of the other materials that the developer has submitted, we do have some concerns and objections. Most recently today, the developer submitted some information with respect to a couple, last name Duda or Dada, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, that they were there at the property and they provided some printouts from online people search or address search. Assuming that the Dudas in fact, or Dadas, did in fact live at the property, the information or the materials provided don't seem to indicate any specific years. So it's unclear as to how exactly they fit into the chronology and whether they actually slot into the years that they have been alleged to slot into. So we have a question or a challenge on that. Now, more importantly, the developers also submitted a letter from the prior owner of the property, the Colbaks. And there's a few, we have a few issues with this letter. First, it's just a simple letter, and in the letter it says that they state several things. There's, there's no representation. There's no recognition of it being under oath or subject to pains and penalties or perjury. So it's basically just a simple letter, and I would therefore say it has some limit, only limited relevance to start with. But beyond that, when you dig into what's actually stated in the letter, in the body of the letter, it references that the Colbaks rented the apartments, and I say apartments plural, that's what they use in the letter, for 50-plus years after their ownership. But the occupancy list that we've previously provided clearly shows that they occupied the property in 2009 and 2010. So it can't be that they rented both apartments for all those years and lived there at the same time they were renting the apartment that they, you know, that they occupied. So there's a, there's a conflict with their letter with the apparent records. On top of that, their letter doesn't reference that they lived in the property at all. It simply says that they rented it, which is inconsistent, again, with the available records. And they indicate that they declared rental value income for the property each year. So, so looking at that and the inconsistency with the record, to me, indicates that the letter, that this letter is potentially inaccurate or misleading and has very limited value with respect to evidentiary weight. But even if we take everything at face value, the statement with respect to rental value doesn't necessarily mean that they derive rental value from both units consistently. It simply says that they obtain rental value every year. And in fact, for so, for many years throughout the occupancy table, it does, it does look like at least one unit was probably occupied, although there are a few spots where there's a question on that. So based on all of that, we still challenge and question whether or not the use of the property for lawful, as a lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family has been established, or whether in fact it was abandoned at some point during the years. We also note that there was testimony at the previous hearing from a couple of neighbors that indicated their opinion based on their own observations as neighbors, that it appeared to have been abandoned, that they didn't see activity. So we also point to that. Now, my last point has to do with the other aspect of this, which is the question about the footprint and what gets counted and what doesn't get counted. Now, I still stand by what I had previously submitted, specifically including the Latin phrasing. But another, another thing occurred to me, you know, as is sometimes the case when you step away from language and then you go back and you read it again, a whole new interpretation comes to you. And I'd like to point, I'd like to take a look at the applicable paragraph in section 1.4.7.4 that talks about what the term footprint shall be defined as. And it basically says, well, I'll read the whole thing. "The term footprint shall be defined as the area of the lot which is within the perimeter created by the vertical extension to the ground of the exterior walls of all fully enclosed portions of a building, including attached garages, porches, solariums, and similar fully enclosed extensions, attachments, accessory annexes, plus eaves and roof overhangs." Now, the question really that comes up in the materials has been, what does accessory annexes mean? But one of the, one thing that occurred to me as I looked at this language afresh was based on the structure of the sentence, it really appears that everything following "including" is a modifier to portions of a building. It's not referencing something separate from the building. It's basically adjectives as to, or adverb, as to, you know, what, what portions of the building get included. So for example, attached garages, portions of the building, porches, portion of the building, solariums, portions of the building, fully enclosed extensions, attachments, and accessory annexes, portions of a building. So in addition to all arguments that have already been laid out with respect to how this section should be interpreted so that a detached garage doesn't get counted, I think you can also look at this language afresh and say that this language does not contemplate inclusion of a detached garage in a, in a footprint because a detached garage is not a portion of the building. And that concludes our update.
Any questions for the appellant?
Uh, no, no questions. Thank you for that presentation.
Sure, we have an empty mic for you.
Evening again to the chair and evening to the board. Represent Driftwood Landing LLC. In this matter, I'm Jeff Eugino of Gellerman Cabral in Norwood. First on the issue of two-family use in occupancy, you know, what the appellant set out to do here was essentially prove a negative. They want to show a bunch of holes in a timeline that shows two or, two or more years of vacancy or abandonment. You know, what better way to do that, to find holes in a record than to go to town records, which, which, which rely on whether someone returned their voter registration form, whether that person was registered to vote at all, whether they returned their, their town census. I mean, you're dealing with information that is wholly unreliable when you're relying on, on whether people return these items. And I would submit, I think you'd have to agree that, that rental properties, definitely more transient people here coming in and out, much more unreliable as to those town records versus single-family homes, which I think everyone can agree probably have a longer, longer residency status here. You know, that's what you're dealing with. And so the appellant's first went back to about 2003. Of course, they found some holes because not everyone was registered to vote, not everyone returned their town census, and therefore, apparently by default, that means that the unit was not vacant. You know, that, that basis of information to determine whether the use was continuous or not is, is completely haphazard and unreliable. On the other hand, you have a, a statement from the 51-year owners of this property. It clearly has tax implications for them because they said they, they took rental income deductions from this property for 50 straight years between 1973 and 2023, before selling to my client just in the past year. You have all the classic indicators of, of what goes, what the demarcation is law-wise between a single family and a two-family, all the case law that's based on whether there's two kitchens, whether there's two utility meters, whether there's, you know, two major utilities such as hot water, heating systems. You have, you have the record of the, of the building commissioner that was recently submitted, just was in the past week, of various permits pulled from those buildings dating to the 1960s. Every single one of those permits said that this was a, a two-family dwelling. And now you have the Colbaks, you know, with all deference to Mr. Jenta, there's no better evidence than the owners of the property who now have no further skin in the game here. They're, they're, they're out. They have not, they did nothing before this board. We went back to them, worked, worked through their Realtor and said, could you just give us some more information? That's who we got the lease from. They did their best to cough up those leases, but they were happy to tell us, happy to put this statement down for us. I'd say it's nearly unimpeachable, I mean, it's almost as positive of the issue here. On the one hand, we're trying to find out who returned their, who returned the town census, who bothered to register to vote before the motor voter law went into effect. And on the other hand, we have a statement of, of the 51-year owners of this property. You know, I don't think there's any gaps in this statement. You know, the, the fact they, they lived there for a time in one of the units. They moved across the street, literally, rented out, unit for several decades, moved back in before finally selling. I mean, they themselves, they, I know they had a home in Maine they traveled back and forth with. And we haven't heard too much of the evidence tonight about, well, I didn't see anyone for a little bit. I mean, people, people travel for work. Colbaks lived in one of the units during their last stint. They had a home in Maine. The house was still used as a two-family. The fact that someone isn't there every day leaving at 8 o'clock to go to work doesn't mean that, 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 that property's not still used as a two-family. You know, I, I think just, just the evidence that we did find, we, we found those leases. I'm sorry, I got late breaking to the, the board just this morning. We had information to fill in. What I understand is the only, the only gap year that, that was, to the extent that that truly matters, the 2016, 2017 timeframe with, was mentioned, Mr. Duda and Ms. Piver. We just got the information from the Colbaks yesterday that, oh yes, they remember, they remember those people. They, kids splurded Jell-O on the, on the dining room ceiling, for instance. But what all that shows is the leases that we were able to find, the other information we were able to find from the Colbaks personally, is just the exercise of going through town records to prove a negative that the structure wasn't used as a two-family. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's just not good evidence. It's, it's, it's unreliable and it's, and I just asked the board to just, just not consider it. So I, I hope the board is, is satisfied, or at least we met the intent of the board as to filling in that, that chart. You know, I represent, we, we did everything we could to ask the Colbaks to, to produce leases, but they were happy to make this, to make that statement. As to the definition of 1.4.7.
Can people.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no problem. And you're going to be able to come back again after we hear the neighbors. I would like to hear what you think, if you would like to come up to, speaking of microphone? All right, good.
Good evening, members of the board and audience. Joe Pranek, building commissioner. And I apologize that I was not able to be here at the last hearing due to a bereavement issue. So here we are today. I would like to give a quick rundown of how we got here. In, in that initially, the, the developers went directly to the Board of Appeals seeking a special permit under a different section of the bylaw. When I got it for review, I discovered that there was a section of the bylaw that said they couldn't have a footprint more than 18%. So that, that caused the developer to withdraw that application to the board. Subsequent to that, and I will take a brief exception to attorney's comment that I encouraged him to go as a matter of right. I did not encourage. I may have pointed out that there was a section that allows this type of thing to happen as of right, but did not encourage. So he pursued that matter and then applied for a permit, and that permit went to my former assistant building commissioner, who's no longer with us, Eric Tardif, and Eric issued the permit based on the submittal that he, that he received. I then received some concerns from the abutters that perhaps the footprint in the section that allows a building as of right was not calculated properly. So I took a look at that and I had some concerns. So I asked, I immediately asked the developer to hold off, don't do anything. I didn't revoke the permit, but I reviewed what was submitted. One thing that happened was Eric Tardif, a former assistant, counted the, the open porch as part of the footprint, assuming that the, he made the assumption that the roof could be considered overhang. So I immediately had, had an issue with that. And then the, the issue of the garage, I certainly had, my initial reaction was, no, you can't count the garage because it says only detached, only attached garages can be counted. But then Eric again came to me and said, the word annex is very unclear. It's not specifically defined in the bylaw. And so as I thought through that, you know, and unfortunately, you know, number one, it's not defined. Number two, we don't, we don't, it didn't say accessory structure, but it said annex. And if I look up the plain definition of annex, it really talks about any, any addition or other building on a lot or at, at any premises, really. So then I thought about, you know, if this were a pool house or if this were a garden shed, would we count those? And a lot of times, especially during COVID, in the previous town I worked for and this town here, a lot of people converted their detached garages to playrooms for the kids, home offices, art studios, a number of different uses. So would I have looked at that differently had that been a pool house, for example? So then I said, well, if, if I were to, if that were a pool house and I were to count it, but I would just specifically exclude the detached garage, then I would, that would be kind of an arbitrary decision. So I finally came to the conclusion in my mind that the, that the detached garage should, and its overhangs should be counted under the word annex. So given those parameters to the developer, they went back and had their surveyor calculate the area of the garage. They took away the, the unenclosed porch and the overhangs of the house along with the footprint of the house and came up with a reduced version of, of the proposal. And at one point, on the, on the, say the first version of the reduced footprint, the numbers seemed to be okay, but then they, they actually created another sideline issue because of the house is more than 32 feet long against the sideline. So they then went back and revised the plan to, to the plan you have in front of you now. So I believe that the current plan fits within the matter of right section of the bylaw and that the, the permit should be upheld.
Is that the plan due January 15, '25? It's a proposed house? There's been so many plans.
Yeah, if you could hear with me a second, I believe that's the case. Yeah, 1/20/25.
Focusing, thank you for your opinion and how you got there and your, your reading of the bylaw. What do you say and think on the arguments that there has been a presentation of an abandonment of this two-family, which is sort of key to our finding?
So typically, building departments in, across the state, in, in this, in past history of this department, we rely on our permit history. And the permit history, although not 100% clear, allowed me to come to a reasonable conclusion that this has been a two-family, used as a two-family, enjoyed pre-existing non-conforming status, lack of an appeal with substantial evidence.
Yes.
We have to rely on what's in front of us. And this is really what, anytime somebody comes.
Yes.
To rebuild a two-family, we look at the permit history. And that was done, we thought that it was reasonable enough to issue that permit.
No, no one's faulting that position at the building department section. We've had numerous, I've been on this board, it's got to be 20 years now. We've had numerous applications, and this is addressing your point, where significant evidence has been presented on the continuous use of a two-family and a reconstruction of a two-family. And when it's presented, there's an obligation for the applicant or the respondent and the board to deeply look and to see if there's abandonment, because abandoned is a, is a statute or a requirement in case law. So we now, as a board, have to look at that. It's been presented. And so you're, you're, you're feeling you don't want to weigh on any of the evidence presented on that? Had you had evidence of this?
With respect to Mr. Jenta, I do have to agree with the.
Sorry?
Eugino, that voter registration and, and census records are, are incomplete at best. And I've experienced that over, over many years of working for several different jobs.
And just for everybody here, we've relied on that significantly over the last two decades. And I think the, the most famous discussion was with the historical commission with Gloria Greis, who was your match in finding historical records of something being abandoned. It was a very intriguing discussion. So in any event, I just wanted to get to, thank you for your thoughts on that. And anybody have any questions or with Joe, for Joe?
Well, yeah, I do. And I appreciate you coming and I appreciate your candor and analysis and sharing all, all that with us because you struggled with this and you came up in support of the current application with that January 25 plan. As you look at the structure, it, it does comply with all the current setbacks, correct?
Correct.
And do you see anything about it that, that is inappropriate or irregular in your experience?
Having reviewed the plans, no, I do not.
Well, again, I thank you so much for, for your, for your analysis and sharing that with us.
My pleasure. Thank you. So if you could stay a little bit longer?
Oh, I'll, I'll stay until the end.
So now I want to.
Probably go off to the side.
I don't think you finished.
Well, he, he has more time, but I've wanted to get all these people there.
I can wait. Mr. Chairman, I can wait. I just want to speak on the, the 1.7 one more time, but I can certainly wait till after.
Go ahead.
And just, just to piggyback off of what Mr. Pranek said in terms of the definition, if you look at it, it clearly, in fact, in two separate sentences divides the categories into two separate categories. One is unenclosed, enclosed structures, and the other is unenclosed structure. In fact, he uses the first sentence that says all fully enclosed portions of a building, including, and this is where it breaks the definition up into, into three parts. You have in the first definition, everything that's, it's attached and part of the main structure. Attached garages, porches, solariums, and similar fully enclosed extensions. Everything that's, that's part of the main building that's enclosed. The next category is attachments and accessory annexes. And obviously, I think that's where we fall, although annex is not defined in, in the bylaw. Accessory building is. Accessory building, a building devoted exclusively to use, to use subordinate and customarily incidental to the principal use. In terms of what's an accessory annex for a, for a residential. In terms of what's an accessory annex for a residential building, the first thing that comes to mind is detached garages. The second thing, sheds, tool sheds, garden sheds, pool houses, you know, what are these things if not accessory buildings to a residential structure? And that's what we have here. So that second category, you have essentially outbuildings that are enclosed, attachments, accessory annexes. Then you have a third category, eaves and roof overhangs. All those fit into the enclosed category, and all those count under this section for the allowable footprints. The second part of the definition, the second part of the definition is what's not included. It has its own sentence, not included in the footprint, are unenclosed portions of extensions of buildings. We talked about carports, open decks, open porches. If you read it that way, and I encourage the board, did you have to read it that way? You have enclosed portions of buildings that are, in this case, incident to the main structure in a residential property, and then you have unenclosed structures. They don't count. When you look at that, you have to, you have to read a detached garage, detached garage is an accessory annex, whatnot, but for a garage, a tool shed would be an accessory annex to a single family, or in this case, a two-family, a residential use. So I'd ask the board to consider that.
Thank you.
I just want to just point something out, and Mr. Goodson ran to disagree with him, Mr. Goodson, at this point. Focusing on the comma, so it says all fully enclosed portions of a building, comma, including attached garages, porches, solariums, and similar fully enclosed extensions, comma. So I agree with your interpretation that there is that comma, modifying building, an adjective, some might say, and that attachments and the eaves are a separate category. So I do side with what you're saying, along with the building commissioner. The question I have is on the abandonment issue, and trying to look at the statement of the seller. Let me find that here.
Exhibit two to the.
I tabbed it.
Right here.
Thank you. So that, certainly it's very helpful to get the statement from the seller. I do agree with Mr. Gunt, it doesn't seem to be under the pains and penalties of perjury, but in particular, but anyhow, so I definitely have the clear sense that the seller is trying to communicate to us, the board, and to the public. And it says that we have declared rental income from the property for each and every year from 73 to 23. So they've declared rental income, but it's a little confusing to me, and it's pointed out by Mr. Gunt, to the status. So were they living there at one time? How does it come in, they remain, they're portion, living, it's part of their multiple homes?
When they first bought in 1973, they lived there for a number of years in unit two. At some point, they, I don't have that in front of me, it was at least, he has, at least 10 or so years later, they purchased a single family across the street, rented out both units at that point. And then at some point, they downsized, moved back into unit one for the, there's two.
I think I should speak.
So I, introduce yourselves. Arthur Elzon, one of the developers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the statement that I have, and again, this is a text message from a neighbor with the owner from February 11th. It said, after we purchased, we lived in apartment one for two years. So in 1973, they purchased the home, they lived in apartment one for two years, they rented out apartment two. They bought 15 Otis Street across the street and rented out both apartments for the next 35 years while they lived in 15 Otis. Then, when Clint retired, Clint, the husband, they sold Otis Street and moved back into apartment two for roughly 15 more years, and continued to rent apartment one, which is why, and again, I spent extensive time at Town Hall, look at the census data, and to try to understand why there are holes, and it was clear, but why, for apartment two, there was no data, because they lived in there. They lived there, and there was a time that they registered to vote outside of the state, but they still lived there, because they had a house in Maine as well. So again, voter registration, census data, it was the most unreliable source that I could find without actually speaking to the people who lived and owned this home for more than 50 years. Yeah, yeah, so Michael, he's also the developer.
Michael Yankowski. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry if I speak out of turn. Somebody said, you know, we've been relying on voter records for 20 years, as long as we've been here, and I do agree with you, these voter records are very reliable to show that somebody lived there. But in my opinion, you cannot rely on this to prove the negative. A lack of a voting record cannot be used to prove that somebody wasn't there. And we've plugged most of these holes that they showed us, and not all of them, but most of them, within just, you know, three days, the first three days after we saw it. So we were able to basically show that voting record can be used to show that somebody in fact lived there, but you cannot show that nobody, a lack of data doesn't prove that nobody was there, as we've seen, as we've been able to, you know, plug these holes almost immediately. If I may, please, I don't know if it makes any difference, but this particular annex was actually a shed. I have a video when we purchased this house, I thought it was interesting, it was actually, I don't know if this mattered, we actually never talked about this, but I just realized that if it makes a difference, it was full of tools, it was used as a shed, they have a little workshop there, nobody's parked there for, you can tell, I mean, the garage wasn't working, the doors are always down, they have used it as a shed, if it makes a difference. I actually have a video of it inside, it's full of tools, and they, you know, use it as a shed, clearly. Again, if it makes a difference at all. I don't know if I should continue or not, if there's another chance.
No, thank you. Yeah, sure.
Okay. At this point, I'd like anybody in the audience who would like to come up, direct your questions to the chair, not the applicant, the respondent, the appellant, or the respondent. Come on up, and introduce yourself, your address.
Hi, my name is Abby Klein. I live at 35 Otis Street, which is directly across the street from 378 Manning. So we purchased our house in 2013, and we've lived there since then. And I understand that the applicants have leases and are showing that the house was leased. In the entire time that we lived there, we did not ever see or speak to the owner. So either the house was vacant, or one unit was being rented out, but the house was absolutely, in my opinion, not lived in by the owner. And I think there are multiple neighbors that will attest, at least over the last, certainly the period that we were there, it was not occupied by the owner.
And what was the period, years again?
2013, until we still live there. And our driveway directly, you know, backs up to their driveway. So, I mean, we're looking at and pulling out every single day, directly across the street. Similarly, when I was looking at the, what was the record, the property record, it showed that the owners occupied the unit in 2009 to 2010, and that was the only years in that property record, which I think was exhibit one, that they actually showed them in the other units. So I believe even that shows that they weren't, I mean, if you, this one here, it shows Clinton Kolbeck in this unit for just these two years, which was before we moved in, and is consistent with what we've noticed. But I think you'll see that there's a number of neighbors that have written in similarly, that, you know, one of whom I think spoke at the last meeting, who's lived on the street for 59 years, and has known the former owners for many, many years, but stated unequivocally that they haven't lived there, certainly for the last decade. So I understand that there are leases and whatnot, but it's the, it might be built as a two-family, it has not been occupied, at least in my opinion, and I think in virtually every single neighbor on the street's opinion, as a two-family. In terms of the detached garage issue, it's also my understanding that 354 Manning, which is two doors down from our house and three doors down from the property in question, when they applied to build that house, the detached garage was excluded. I believe the owners of that house have written a letter as well into this. And so just as like a needham resident, it seems strange to me that the same bylaw would be applied inconsistently to two properties that are three doors down from one another. Just from like an equitable standpoint, it feels like there should be consistency in terms of whether attached or detached garages are included, you know, the footprint is allowed to be included in the new structure that's being built. So that is my point, just, you know, just understanding whether, you know, how the same bylaw can be applied differently to two properties that are.
15 years, different building commissioners, changes in interpretation.
Okay.
Things can change that way.
No, that's fine, it just seems strange, you know, three houses apart.
Yesterday versus today, that's something more significant.
Okay, all right, but just.
Just my opinion, why.
Okay, okay.
Is that a two-family also?
It's not a two-family, but it's, it's just in terms of whether the detached garage is included in the building footprint.
Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Joe Cargill. I live at 25 Otis Street, which is diagonally across from the property. I've lived there since 2010 with my wife and two kids. I found out about this being a two-family throughout this whole process. In 14 years of living there, I never met Clifton, I never saw him until the weeks before, you know, in the fall, when the property was turning over. He was not our neighbor. You know, I knew it was a rental, because I saw, I saw the renters from time to time. They weren't there for a long time, there were clearly periods when it appeared no one lived there. But, you know, I would ask that the board consider actual use, actual occupancy as criteria for uses as a two-family. There's a lot of people telling you, for a long time, Clifton did not live there. He didn't live there. And if any of those four subsections, or three of the four anyways, talk about discontinuance of use as a two-family, he didn't live there. That's the bottom line. That, no one here will attest that he lived there, occupied the dwelling. There's a lot of people saying that. So in my book, I say, please consider that. It seems straightforward. If you consider actual occupancy, then I would say that the previous owner abandoned the use. He could have rented unit two. You know, I don't know how else to sort of say. Subsection three says that the non-conforming use has been replaced by a conforming use. It was one family living there. I'll give you the whole time, even though there are gaps. That's one family living there. That is what the home, the structure was being used for, period. And then, you know, maybe I would like to point out, there's a lot of evidence, but there's also a lack of evidence. One easy way is, let's see some utility bills, because you can't live there without water and gas. You know, I guarantee you, if you looked at the utility bills for unit two, it would be flatline. People weren't living there. That's my experience. I also had some other stuff here, but mostly I got crossed off. I also went to UMass.
Check the score when you get it.
Yeah, I know, right. Yeah, and I, you know, the letter, the Kolbeck's letter said they continue to rent it for the apartments, that they live there and they rent the apartments. You know, the evidence says they've only got rental income, leases for unit one, and at least in the last 10, I've been there 14 years. And if you're taking comments on the garage, you know, Attorney Eugenio was right, they do define accessory building, it's the first definition. 13 pages later, they don't put it in 1.7.4, they use accessory annex. And in my book, it's because they think it's something different. They had, they had the perfect opportunity to put accessory building in the bylaw. It was the, it must have been their favorite one, because it was the first definition, but they chose accessory annex. And when I looked up annex, it sort of meant to attach, could have been associated with, but I think Oxford and Merriam, they use the word attach. So it just seemed like the plain English, no Latin, nothing else. That just seemed like something, you know, last time it was detached means not attached in Latin, all that. They had the opportunity to put a definition, a defined term in there, and they didn't. And so I'd like, I'd ask you to consider that, and, yeah, and if you follow the whole accessory annex, it's a detached garage, then it's a pool house, then it's a tool shed, then it's a doghouse with four walls, a roof, foundation, where does it end? And where does a developer then come and say, hey, let's put a shed up and get 400 extra feet, or whatever it is? I just think that, in my opinion, I would ask you to consider the precedent that sets going forward for, hey, we got some room for a garage there, or another accessory annex, and where that might lead. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question, because now I'm getting confused?
Okay.
When did the Kolbeks move back? Did you say before? I understand it's a point of contention, but.
Sure, so, and again, they did say that they rented the apartments, because they rented the apartments when they lived in apartment one for the first two years, they rented apartment two.
And then they moved across the street.
And then they moved across the street, so they rented both for 35.
Right.
And then they moved.
And they sold the house across the street.
They sold 15, Otis Street moved into unit two.
When, when did they say they did that?
So 37 years from 1973.
Oh, boy, we're doing math. 2010.
Right.
Was it 73 plus what?
1973 is when they bought it, and it was plus 37 years.
Thank you.
Yeah, 2010, which, by the way, if you look at the deeds, which you have, they did move the property into a trust, which again, I'm not sure, maybe that's why they didn't get the census or the voter registration, they were doing it somewhere else, but.
So it's too bad that they're not here to, I mean, there's some questions that the submittal they have is helpful, but also has some holes, and obviously, some of the neighbors are inquiring. You know, I think referred, some people very clearly say they haven't seen activity, didn't see the owners for a long time. I live in the street, I don't see a lot of the owners either, but, you know, they're saying it convincingly, and there's a lot of them. So it just raises the question, where the owner's living there? And in that last paragraph, they've declared rental income, but they don't state that, you know, that they were living there, and you sort of filled the gap with some of the materials you're reading from, which was persuasive, but I'm just a little troubled why they didn't put it into their statement.
Okay, so, I have problems with the letter. So obviously, it's not a convincing letter. They could have done much better to say, we've rented this space for 25 years, 30 years to two tenants, all the time, we lived here, there was another tenant, it doesn't say it, it goes around the circle. So I'm not saying you can't revise that, but it's not an affidavit, it's not under the pains and penalties of perjury, it's just a statement that sort of goes around the issues that, if you supplement it with what you're reading from, gets a lot better. So there's some holes in the letter, but I just still want to get some of the residents to talk about, we can talk about the letter, it's like, yes, come on up.
Danny Klein, 35 Otis Street. I belong to her. And we, I just want to add one quick thing, because I think it's relevant. I did discuss last time that we, as my wife said, our house is directly across the street from the house in question, or from the property in question. Our driveway is directly across from what used to be their driveway. And every single time that we would back out of our driveway, because it's an inclined driveway, so we have to be super careful, look behind the mirrors, look around the shoulders, I could see through my rear mirror, their driveway. And there was prolonged periods of time where there was no vehicle at all at any hour of the day. So I get your point in terms of running into neighbors, but as they rightfully pointed out, the garage was not operational, they were using it as a tool shed, which leads me to think that any vehicle or any inhabitant of that property would have to have their cars in the driveway, not in the garage. If that's the case, there's clearly no cars that belong to that property, and there's no activity in that property for prolonged periods of time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the? Anybody else in the, I'm up, sir?
My name is Mike Fondo. I live in Needham. My former wife and I own 14 Parkinson Street, which is about a three wood from where this property is going in. For me.
That's a golfer.
You know, again, so we live, my former wife and the kids live right around the corner, and I've actually been talking to Arthur about purchasing one of these units for my kids and their mom to live in once this gets done. Because we'd like to stay in Needham, the kids like to stay in Needham. And, you know, I just think the town, I'm not going to get involved with the square footage and the garages and all that. I'm just saying, you know, from a policy perspective, I think having opportunities for two families, for families that do want to downsize, I think is an important goal in town, particularly given how expensive housing has become. And I don't know what the alternative would be, but I imagine it would be some very large, single-family home again. And I just think, you know, if that has anything to do with anything, having these types of opportunities for people who are looking to downsize, or even a young family who can't afford a $3.5 million, $3 million home, is something that should be taken into consideration at some level. But again, I'm not sure that that's relevant here, but I just wanted to go on the record and say, you know, we're, you know, if they're worried about, you know, lots of cars and all this sort of thing in the driveways and all, you know, the two kids are in college, one's probably not even going to move back, so it's not going to be a situation where you're going to see wild parties going on or anything like that, so that's all.
Thank you.
If I may respond to that, I just want. If you'd speak into the microphone.
I'd be happy to, thank you.
They want to hear you on cable television.
So I just want to kind of respond to that and.
Identify yourselves.
Sorry, Nick Kozlov, one of the.
He doesn't remember.
No, I remember.
I wasn't here, I had to travel forward last time. So part of the appellant. You know, we had a conversation with the developers trying to, you know, work towards something that could be more agreeable. I think the issue that we're running into is just, the new structure is significantly bigger than what was there before. There was a one-story detached garage, and then the other structure was 50 feet away from our house. And we bought our house, knowing it was a two-family, 50 feet away from our house. I think, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't work in real estate. When I look at the arguments on the inclusion of that garage in the footprint, I mean, the building gets its status because it was built in 1909, and so it was grandfathered in as a two-family. That's great. The garage, I mean, Model Ts were built in 1908. The garage wasn't part of the original building. And now the new plan depends, like a third of the footprint depends on that one-story garage. And, you know, I appreciate that it's two families. Both of those two families in the proposal are bigger than the house we just bought. So, you know, it's going from 50 feet to 15 feet away. And I just wanted to kind of make sure that the intent of the bylaw, as well as the impact, were considered in addition to all of the fancy Latin jargon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's important to remember that if the building permit is not upheld, that the most likely alternative will be a really large, single-family house, which will be much larger.
We understand it'll be.
And closer than.
To or to be closer. Yes, that's what we're dealing with it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to remind people about that.
May I just kind of add to him? So Megan Waldvogel, I was here last time, I'm also one of the appellants. Thank you for your time. I just, I think one of the primary issues for us has been about occupancy. And so that was a four-bedroom multifamily home previously. Now it's proposed as an eight-bedroom home. And when you think about, it's a quiet street, it's a very quiet street. There are a lot of kids that live on this street. There is candidly not, it wasn't, I mean, we've not lived here since August. We cannot attest to the, you know, use prior to that. But it sounds like there were not many cars coming in and out. And so considering occupancy is obviously going to increase compared to what it was, and really thinking about parking and the availability there, that's, when we think about size, it's going to be larger, but a single family would, based upon, you know, whether it's even allowed to be remaining a multifamily home, presumably would have more available parking for potentially less occupancy. So that's, I understand that, I just wanted to respond, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Hi, David Risato, 14 Otis Street. I've only lived in Needham for maybe a year and a half or so. First of all, I want to thank you guys for what you do. Once a month, I guess it is, but I'm sure you work a lot more behind the scenes for listening to all these arguments and trying to figure it out, figure out the right thing to do. Just, I don't want to repeat anything that the neighborhood has said here, but a couple of observations, there's really, we keep going back to two things. Whether it was abandoned, whether it was a two-family, that's going to obviously be a judgment call on your part, right? I'm impressed with the former owners. They seem very tax savvy, right? They were renters, they had three homes. This shouldn't be your primary residence from a tax perspective, right? Call Florida your home, move back in before you sell it so that you get the homestead exemption, right? These guys were smart, which is kudos for them for that. The part that seems a little troubling to me, just trying to observe this, is the, kind of the comment you made before in response to, I think it was Megan's question about, it wasn't Megan, I'm sorry, I forget who it was, but the judgment of the building inspector around the issue of whether the garage is included or not included. We've been going over this language with two esteemed lawyers and having different judgments. That just seems wrong to me. It was Abby. When Abby brought up the other house down the street that was single-family, that the garage counted, and now we're debating whether the garage counts here. Just as like town policy, I'm not sure that should be the building inspector's call, right? It's got to be someone's call, but it should be this board's call, and it should be specified.
Well, it doesn't come to us.
Right. You shouldn't have to make that judgment case by case. That, just as town policy doesn't.
It is actually with the building, for sure, that he's entrusted with these determinations.
But.
The bylaw should be clear.
The bylaw should be clear so that.
Or it's already clear.
Maybe, but it shouldn't, as building inspectors change, should they have different judgments for something that becomes so crucial to our town and to neighborhoods about whether this is included or not included?
I think we've all done that as attorneys, and the case law and the statutes allow building commissioners to have their own interpretation. They're people, and they read things, and judges have different interpretations, and boards have different interpretations. What should be clear, however, or clearer, is when something is presented like this to have town meeting or the planning board clarify anything that's not clear. So you get these issues, these types of cases. So I don't think it's a policy issue. It's, is the bylaw clear and how are they interpreted? And I don't know about what happened 15 years ago and the interpretation of annex. I don't know.
So we're under, the building commissioners relatively new here, right? A year and a half?
About 37 years.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning your judgment at all. That's not my, not my point. I'm thinking, these guys, any developer, the rules of the road aren't necessarily clear, right? For you, on whether, on what you can ultimately build. It's not clear for neighbors who are going to have some structure built there, whether it's one family or two. I think you guys will ultimately decide. But I just think, as an observer, but also as an interested neighbor, that this inclusion creates a substantially larger house, whether it's two-family or single-family. And that's not necessarily good for our neighborhood. That's not necessarily good for the town to have that level of uncertainty.
And unfortunately, in most cases, where there's a reconstruction of a two-family, where the zoning has changed over the last 100 years, 100-plus years, this comes up. And we've had many, many cases in where people move into an area thinking and believing and knowing it's a single family, but there are two-family homes, and it creates an issue. And the ideal situation is developers and neighbors work things out in a two-family. If it's substantiated, then it has continued, is allowed to continue. And we agree, give, as a board, great deference to the building commissioner and his statutory interpretation. That's his, for her job.
If it turns out to be a single-family home, and you're, because any decision you make, then the size of the existing structure is not pertinent, is that?
Yeah, the garage is completely irrelevant to what could be built as a single-family.
At that point, okay.
It's only relevant here because they want to build a two-family with the same footprint.
Right, okay.
Which doesn't happen automatically.
I will cede any extra time to the rest of my neighbors, but thank you.
Thank you. Other neighbors?
Good evening. Chris Christopoulos, 11 Bradford Street, just about six houses away. I personally am in support of what they're trying to do. I think, to comment on what you had said, under the previous building inspector, I think there would have been no question that this would have been a larger two-family because he interpreted the code differently. A lot of other two-families are bigger based on the FAR allowed by single families. They go, he went by that. So under the previous building inspector, it would have been much bigger. So I think Joe has taken a much more conservative approach, which is good, I think, to allow more affordable housing in the area. Everybody's complaining about how expensive homes are. We have an opportunity to add more housing stock and, but you can't have one without the other. So I think affordability is a big factor here. Like many of you have said, there'd be a bigger single-family anyways, that would be even closer to the neighbors. So a two-family that's further away, I don't see what the problem would be. Just listening in here, it seemed to me that the neighbor, or the Colbacks, lived in Maine as well. So this was a second home, and I would imagine that you can have a second home and still keep the occupancy as a two-family. And I would also like to say, last time, a neighbor had commented on an accident in front of the house. I was the fortunate person to be hit by the other person. I was traveling down Manning, as I do probably multiple times a day. There was a person coming off of Otis who looked one way, the other way, and not back again. So it had nothing to do with construction, it was just somebody that was, you know, as I've probably been before and got lucky, just careless. And so, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Krista Brasso at 377 Manning, so directly across from the new construction across Manning Street. So I just want to comment on the occupancy as well. We've been there since May of 2023. And we would say, so we look at supposedly one of the entrances to the former two-family or to the two-family, and we didn't see any activity in the year and a half that we have been there. Maybe a stray package, so I guess if someone was occasionally dropping by, but I wouldn't say there was any regular entry or exit from the building from that entrance, which looks out our front door, so we saw it regularly. And then I guess, kind of building on Megan and Nick's point of just what it was intended to be and what it's going to, I do think we have a young son as well, so we are mindful of just the size and the congestion and how it could go from a small intended home or two-family to such a large building with many more cars and people in a same amount of space. I also just think it was interesting, the point that Mr. Gonton made before, that two-family buy special permit is 18%. And now we're arguing to make something much larger, and it seems like maybe there's a reason that permits typically allow it only 18%. And now we're arguing to make it bigger because of what's there before with this argument of the kind of flux of the annex. So just want to make that point as well. But we care a lot about this neighborhood and all the people in it, and we want to make sure it's safe and reasonable and keeps the character and safety of them on there, too.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sure?
Hi, my name's Kelly Partridge. I live at 394 Manning Street, which is on the same side as the property we're discussing, about three houses down towards Great Plain Avenue. So we have lived there for about 20 years. I have three kids who I walked to the Mitchell School every morning and every afternoon for 10 or 11 years, actually, it was 13 years between the three kids, starting in 2005. We also have a dog that I walk around the block. And in all the years that I walked to Mitchell, home from Mitchell, to pickup, back from pickup, and walking the dog around, I never once saw a person enter or leave that property or saw anyone through a window, nothing. And the property was not super well-maintained on top of that, especially pushing stroller down the sidewalk. The bushes would always be growing out onto the sidewalk, that kind of thing. It was never shoveled in the winter. And the driveway was empty, meant, like, the majority of the time, the driveway was empty. So when I'm hearing that there were two separate people, whether it be the owner or two renters living there, it's a shock to me to hear that. So that's just my input on the occupancy.
You mentioned about shoveling, but that's germane. So your testimony today is that over the 10-plus, 20 years that you've been there, you never saw the driveway shoveled?
The sidewalk shoveled.
So the sidewalk was shoveled in the way?
No, no, no. I'm saying that the, because I used to walk on the sidewalk.
Right.
And to my recollection, I mean, there could have been an exception here or there, but my recollection was that I always had to move out onto the street to walk.
So the sidewalk, not the driveway, you're not testifying?
The driveway, I can't, I don't remember, honestly, I can't, I can't tell you. Yeah, the driveway faces Otis, and I would walk straight down Manning.
I think the driveway not being shoveled for 20 years was an implication of something.
No, it caught my eye. So in other words, in the 20 years you were there with your three children and the dog and God knows what else. You never walked by Otis in the driveway?
Oh, I'm sure I did. I just, I don't remember whether the driveway was shoveled or not shoveled. You know, I specifically remember the sidewalk because of the stroller issue. You know, like, trying to, yeah.
I mean, I can think of where I live off of Central, and, you know, sometimes the walkways aren't shoveled, and sometimes they are.
Of course.
But the driveway, I mean, if the driveway isn't shoveled, that's your memory over 20, but it sounds like that's not your memory.
I can't tell you one way or the other with that, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I'm just going to read three letters that came in. If you're here, I apologize for destroying your names. John Judge submitted an email today. And he's asking that the board rescind the permit. I won't get into the substance, it's long. And then I had another, we have another email from Jeannie in Brooks Goddard. They're not here, I guess, at 59 Otis Street, and lent in great detail. And suggesting, I guess, a modification on the plans. If someone wants to better paraphrase the email, but the main issues are size and height, cars on the street. And David and Courtney Willett of 75 Otis Street gave several points. We increased parking, disproportioned footprints and setback precedent. And they're suggesting that the proposal in its current form be rejected, not necessarily our purview. It's more whether the application for review is in. So anybody on Zoom, Tiffany?
There is Sarah.
Those emails are in the record, and they are available for review. Right there. One's there, and one's there right there here.
Hi, guys. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my video to work. Hi, I'm Sarah Solomon. I live at 21 Otis Street. Sorry, I couldn't be at the hearing tonight. Oh, my background is really funny. I just wanted to reiterate what a lot of, on the neighbor said. My husband and I moved in, in February of 2020, so over five years now. We live just kitty corner to the property. I walk around the neighborhood a lot, as probably most of the neighbors could attest. I'm pretty religious about getting my steps in. I walk frequently past that house on both the Otis street side and the Manning street side to pick up my kids from after school program in, in town. And I've rarely seen anybody at that house. I've certainly never met the owners. I think I've met almost everybody in the neighborhood, never, certainly never met the owners and never met anybody frankly at the house. I never talked to a single, single person at that house. Sometimes it seemed unoccupied and I've only ever seen at most one car in the driveway. So, from where I said, I think it's pretty well known as fact in the neighborhood that the owners have not lived in this house, at least as long as we've been here, which is over five years. I, I can pretty much say that without, without much question that the owners have not occupied that house. So, if there weren't two leases, I, I can't imagine that there were ever two units occupied there. In terms of, I know where we're going over, I just wanted to mention one thing about the garage issue. I, I know that you have opinions about that. I'm not sure this point has been raised, but one thing that caught my eye about the detached garage issue is that it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that when one is building a new, new property and need them on a, you know, on a lot, the FAR, you know, includes the, like the size of house you can build includes an attached garage, but not a detached garage. So, for example, our house was built to the limit of the FAR, but we also have a tat, an attached garage on, on our property, which was a new build in 2019. And so, it just doesn't make logical sense to me that you can create FAR from something that never would have been included in the FAR, if that makes sense.
David Willett submitted his email. He's there. Want to know if he would like to address it since I did such a poor job paraphrasing.
So, could I add, could I add one more thing that hasn't also been brought up, which might clarify some things for the board, oh, to some degree, about this two family proposal?
Sure.
One thing I, I have not heard in all of this conversation, and I know it's maybe been a little bit confusing because I understand that a single family can and would be larger than a two family, based on the regulations. But the design of this particular two family house, and this is a characteristic of the lot, which is rather long and narrow, it's a very odd, odd design in that it's very skinny, a very long and skinny house. I don't remember the exact dimensions, Ray. Do you remember? It's like 93 by 20 feet or something like that. It's an incredibly narrow design right now. And it would just, it would look, I mean, for lack of a better term, just very odd, very odd in, in the context of the rest of the homes in the neighborhood because it would be so long and skinny. I know that, that's not what you're, you know, deciding this on, but it maybe provides a little bit more clarity into some of the, their objections of why we're fighting this based on the regulations.
Thank you again. Anybody else? Stephanie? Okay. Any other questions from the board to the palant, the respondent, the building commissioner? Yes?
I actually have one follow-up comment based on Sarah's last comment there, which has occurred to me, not only do detached garages not get included in calculation of floor area ratio, but for applications under the special permit route under 1474, detached garages do not get included there either. So, if detached garages are to be included in footprint for this purpose, that would be wholly at odds with how they're treated in two other sections of the bylaw without any clear, unambiguous language to point in that direction.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
So, 1474, under the by right, specifically talks about footprint calculations. What you're talking about is 18% lock coverage and 50, 575 square feet of a two-car garage, not included in that lock coverage. As Joe pointed out to me many times throughout the process of redoing the plans, lock coverage and footprint are very different when it comes to 1474. And we are going by footprint, not lock coverage at all.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond?
You may.
So.
To the, to the chair though.
Exactly. So, so I would point out that while footprint and lock coverage are different, they are substantially overlapping. And in fact, if you look at 1474, it actually, the definition is a bit different, but it does cover a lot of the same ground as footprint. So, it's the same concept, but stated a little bit differently.
Mr. Chairman? One second. Did you want to get involved in this one? Yes, counselor.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just asked the board to consider, a lot of the neighbors said, you know, once it was fact that the, the apartments were abandoned and, you know, as the board asked, we, we went and we found leases and essentially we filled in all the gaps as to the testimony you heard tonight from neighbors. You know, all these people are real people. Eddie Kane, two Ashleys, Ashley Morgenthau, Ashley Zappert, Elizabeth Morris, Paul Curtis, they occupied for numbers of years, Talia Piver, Richard Duda, they're real people. They're real people for whom we produce leases. Part of the gaps were filled in by Mr. Jinta himself. The gaps, which you heard about tonight from the neighbors, they've, they've been filled in. And I just asked the, the board to reconsider. I know Mr. Golden, I think, raised the issue as to the, if it was the sufficiency of the Coback statement, agreed it, it wasn't a, it wasn't under the penalties of perjury, it wasn't, it wasn't a formal affidavit, but it's, it's pretty comprehensive. You know, I just asked you, he said, we continue to rent the apartments for the next 50 years and we declared rental income from this property each and every year from 1973 through 2023. You know, and they have, there's no incentive for them to fluff this or, you know, they're not, they have nothing to benefit by saying that here.
So, just to address that one sentence?
Sure.
They don't say that. They say, we have declared rental income from this property. It didn't say, we have rental income from both units of this property. So, that, 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 what I'm saying to you is this letter doesn't have to be an affidavit, it has gaps in what you're trying to present here. He added to whatever he was reading on his cell phone, I don't know, was the U-Mask you low will score, right? Whatever, but he, it, it, that helped, but this letter, that sentence doesn't say that.
The previous ones said, we continue to rent the apartments, plural, for, for the, for the next 50 years.
That's a spin. Doesn't say every year for 50 years. I'm just telling you.
Yeah, they clarified in a text message. And by the way, they, they have, you're right, they have no incentives at all to do this for us. In fact, they took our money, they're boating somewhere. That's what they're doing. And they have, they, they want, they live in the life. They, they want, they want nothing to do with this, but for some reason, they're, they're trying, they're not trying to help us. They're just trying to say, I don't know what the neighbors are talking about. Maybe we weren't good neighbors. I don't know. Maybe we were, maybe we weren't. It doesn't sound like they were good neighbors, but we disagree with the neighbors have to say. This is completely false. And this is what they were able to provide us as a statement while they're boating somewhere nice in the world and we're sitting here arguing over footprints and lock coverage.
Got it. So, it may be helpful, I don't know if you can share your text with the board?
Yes.
That does fill in some of this gap.
Absolutely.
Come on up, use a microphone. And you are?
Rob Sipton, 369 Manning Street. I live kitty corner to the house. I just had a question, just a clarification, just trying to understand abandonment. So, if they live in this two family and one of the units is rented and they're claiming to be residing in the other unit, how long do they have to reside in that unit for it to be considered their residence? Do they have to be in there a certain amount of time or like if they reside there for a week over the course of a calendar year, then does that count as being a residence in two, two units? I'm just trying to understand what, how long both units have to be occupied, occupied over the course of a year for them to be considered?
Well, it's not a residence, it's more it's occupied.
So, what is, but what is the definition exactly of occupied, I guess, is my question? I don't know. Is there?
It's a question of fact. So, if you presented evidence that they never stepped foot in the unit for two years?
Yeah.
It wasn't occupied.
Okay.
If they come in on the weekends, every week for 36 weeks, it's probably occupied.
Okay.
So, it's a question of fact and we base it on what we hear and, and read.
All right. I mean, the only, the only thing I'll say is, is how?
Do you disagree with that?
No, I, I don't think we're gonna get, if you're looking for a bright line, we're not gonna get anywhere near that.
Well, I just was wondering if there was a hard and fast definition, like you have to live in, you know, Florida for six months and a day or whatever. You had mentioned that you have neighbors that you very rarely see. I, I would just wonder if any of those neighbors have detached garages, because I have a detached garage. And so, in order to go from my house, get into my car, I am exiting my house for the whole world to see and getting into my car. And when I get home, I'm exiting my car and going back into my house. So, every single time you leave the house, you are walking outside. And you have all of these neighbors, a couple of who have detached garages, I know who each one of them are, one of whom has no garage, I know who he is because I see them all the time. And so, you have basically a group of neighbors behind me saying they've seen these people once, maybe, zero times for me, twice, I think at the most, over the course of the 10 years I've lived there, walking my dog twice a day, religiously every day. And they're residing there? Like that's, I just don't understand how that would be humanly possible. It's not like they can go from their house into their garage, get in their car, open the garage. Like they have to literally walk outside every time they want to leave their house. So, that would be my interpretation. I, I, I didn't know these people. I see all of these people all the time, even the ones with the attached garages.
Thank you. Can I add one thing? How many of you have lived? Well, you should have directed to the chairs rather than?
I'd like to know, out of all the neighbors that have lived here longer than, past 2010, how many of them saw them at 15 Otis? Great to know, because, you know, they lived at 15 Otis until 2010, then retired and moved into 35. So, they've never seen them at either home? Kind of hard to believe.
So, we don't cross-examine?
Right. Yeah. Just kind of hard to believe. It's like, you know, it's, it's an interesting point. I, I get it. So, in any event. Sounds like this gentleman or family's been hiding from the neighbors here.
So, in any event, does the board have any questions with any people, any side, any issue? If not, you can, uh?
I have one question. Have you looked? I know there's virtually no legislative history. Have either of you looked at anything relating to when this was adopted as to what the planning board and their wisdom thought it meant?
I, I did pull the file and I, and I went through the file. I was talking to Lee Newman, the planning director, who was the planning director when this was adopted. She indicated to me her interpretation that detached garages were not included, but couldn't point to anything to justify that, which is why I haven't included the materials. In looking at the, the, the record, unfortunately, you know, there's a couple of sketches that Mark Boosing had done up for the committee that, that put this in place and, and really then the rest of it is all the, the text of the thing and all these changes that had absolutely nothing to do with this provision. I will say, I mean, it's an interesting quirk, as somebody who does an awful lot of two-family reconstructions, as the board is aware, this is the first time I am aware of the by right provision ever being used or attempted to be used, uh, which, which, you know, sort of is part why I think it's not been, nobody's really paid attention to this language for all this time. So, unfortunately, the institutional memory maybe is a little vague because it, this language has been in there now for quite some time.
Never mind, sorry.
Okay. So, at this point, we're gonna close the public hearing and the board will deliberate on the, yes, do you want to say something before?
Yeah, just, just.
I just want, I want to ask one other thing. Before we close the hearing and deliberate, is there anything you guys want to propose or consider that would somehow mitigate the universal opposition, except there's a couple people?
Actually, that's. That's what you want to talk about? So, so just because last time, there was, you know, probably the first 45 minutes was spent talking about how we did not approach the neighbors and we were essentially, you know, not, not hearing them out. And so, I, I mean, our sign was there, but it's true, we did not physically approach anyone and we did not collect, you know, any feedback. And so, the very next day after the hearing, as per request of the board, we, you know, sent out emails, we requested through, actually through, through Rob to, you know, get everybody on a Zoom call. You know, I think that was maybe four or five days afterwards, we had a, a Zoom call with maybe 30 people who, who joined. We asked, I mean, I know people said just a lot of concerns, concerns, concerns. We, we've asked what the concerns are. We, we said, there's a lot of things we can do, you know, we can driveway locations, you know, window positions, you know, mechanicals, there, there's a lot of things we can, you know, you know, shapes and sizes, all these things, we can work with the neighborhood. I've asked, you know, what things are important and at that meeting, literally nobody had concerns. They were not ready to talk about it. So, for the next three weeks, we've probably, we, we have a timer event, we've probably sent out, you know, four or five emails requesting to, you know, maybe come back and talk to us about anything that we can do. We finally, about four days ago, we had a, another Zoom call with maybe four or five people showed up.
It was this Tuesday on an 18-minute notice, but we made it happen.
Well, we dropped everything. We, we joined the minute, literally canceled my, we joined the Zoom meeting, we, we asked, you know, what we can do. Again, there was not anything substantive and people did, I think it was one couple that requested us to, you know, address garage, parking, two cars, three cars. Those are things we can definitely do. If there is something we, you know, the, the two family is kind of an unnegotiable for us, but size and mechanicals, you know, I know that the couple is probably most affected. You know, we can put AC units, there's, there are things we can do, maybe shape and size of windows, bedrooms, you know, overlooking yards, stuff like that. So, we actually always do work with it. We've had at least two other times in the past where people have even requested things that after we, you know, build a house and they look, say, hey, like this window is awfully, you know, so we actually can and do adjust these things. And so, I do want to point out that if there are concerns even after we begin, I mean, we are not against working with neighbors and we did perhaps do a bad job communicating earlier, but we are open to it and that's.
So, yes, you do want to talk. Come on up.
I just want, Joe, from the building commissioner, I do want to speak for a minute just on the abandonment issue and I'm glad that it's really your decision and not mine, but I do view this, whatever the decision is, it could be precedent setting. And I, as I'm looking at the abandonment clause in 1.4.5 in part A where it says, when the intent to discontinue the use is stated by the owner or is otherwise manifest. So, I think if Mr. Jinta had come to me with this question, or, or should he in the future, I would, I, I would want clear evidence that they, the intent, that it was a, that, that the two-year period was continuous. I think that's, that's important to be able to determine that, two years. I know there's been a lot of testimony that they've never lived there and, but, you know, it's, again, it's, you know, if they came back for a month in any of those two-year periods, and again, I'm not trying to defend their position, I'm looking down the road should this issue come up again. It's just something we have to, so, again, if this were my decision on part A, just based on part A alone, I'm not sure that I would.
When did the statute change? General Wosk? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just a point on a, a quick fact on, on Section A, there's nothing.
We shut the public hearing portion. I got you. Sort of gotta move on, on, on this one. George, is there anything your clients want to do before we close the hearing?
So, so while my clients, um, have a different, uh, understanding as to what, how things kind of transpired. They are open to reviewing design aspects. Their main concern has been and remains the two-family nature and they would much prefer to see a single family. That's their, sort of their ultimate goal. But they are willing to discuss design and I leave that up to the developer, whether they wanna take the time to do that and up to the board, whether the board wants to do that.
So we heard that the two-family is not changing, so it's basically other components of the property. So, but once we continue and decide on this, uh, giving great deference to the building commissioner's decision. We either rule in favor of your application or we don't. And if we don't, the building permit will continue as is, as have they applied. I'm not saying that they won't drive here, but it's always best for us to have people sort of work something out. So this is a, this is a different one, when you're coming here for a special permit to do a two-family? We try to create this consensus in the community, uh, where people work things out. And that helps us guide us to grant the special permit. Here it's a matter of right, it's an appeal of his decision, so it's different. So it's win or lose and the building permit will continue and they'll build their property. So it's, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying that if you want to have a month to talk, you're, you're the appellant, this is your case, all right? Everybody else has been heard, you're all your neighbors and friends, but it's your case. And if you want to talk to these gentlemen to see if there's some changes and modifications that they're willing to do to accommodate your happiness, living next door? That might be prudent, or just go for it.
I guess I, I just have a question, I guess it's, some of this I suppose is hinged upon what is allowed to be built here. Some of the feedback or no, maybe I'm not understanding?
So basically it would be, you, you, you two have a choice of either essentially asking for a decision. Or you can have a conversation with the developer and see if you can come to agreement on design, size, all that kind of stuff. And then presumably withdraw the appeal. Right, right.
Still continue a conversation if the developers want.
All right, all right, we, we heard that. So before you put your jack on, jacket on, I didn't close the hearing officially, we didn't vote it, so come on up, you wanted to say something more, I want you to be.
Does not stipulate a twenty-four month period, it simply stipulates.
It's a different.
Did you, but you referenced? Not that I've been reading these. Well, I raised it.
Did you hear it?
Did you wanna continue this or do you want us to close the hearing and?
So we, I mean, we bought this probably in, in September, uh, a month after the balance. We've been holding on to it for, for a long time, we've had this, you know, building permit in hand for, for a while. With these interest rates, uh, it, it hurts, so, um.
Okay, so I, I will add to what Michael said before. We would like a decision, but at the same time, doesn't mean that we're not gonna work with our neighbors. I live in Needham, my kids go to Brown Meadow School, I'm a Needham resident. Uh, I've been in front of this board from my own home. I get where you guys are coming from, um, and we're not monsters. So based on the decision, whichever way it goes, we will still work with you.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the hearing and we will deliberate, so I'll start with.
I appreciate everybody, uh, speaking earnestly and passionately about their concerns. And, uh, we're volunteers, I'm a Needham resident, have been here for a long time. But so I'm, I'm, I'm asked to give my honest opinion and I will. I think that I do, uh, uh, respect the, the, the building commissioner's analysis. Uh, I think that, uh, the relevant statute one four seven four, uh, says that a, as a right, uh, a applicant can reconstruct on a footprint no greater than what's on the original non-conforming building. It goes on to say what that includes, so it doesn't have to be the same footprint, we all know that. And the argument really is, can the footprint get bigger than the actual building? And I think the definition of one four seven, I've listened to George, I've listened to counsel here as well, I, I concur with counsel. I think that there, there's a, uh, comma, uh, after the adjectives describing building. And it goes on to talk about accessory annexes and it isn't well-defined, uh, and we've resorted to the dictionary. And I concur, uh, uh, that the, uh, that garage that's detached is part of it as it's written. And, you know, our job is, is not to be necessarily the most popular, I know it would be unpopular, but I think that's, that's my interpretation, that's how I personally feel about it. That it does include the detached garage. I think the issue of abandonment i- is a separate one and, uh, let's me just find, okay. And I think that, um, the definition of one four five, section A, uh, that was discussed, when the intent to discontinue is stated by the owner. Well, obviously the owner said just the opposite, he wanted to continue it or is otherwise manifest. But then the second provision B says, when the use has been discontinued, uh, for twenty-four consecutive months. When the use has been discontinued. So we really have conflicting evidence here, right? And to me, that there has to be, uh, overwhelming evidence that the use has been discontinued for twenty-four consecutive months. I get it that, that the owner was, was not a regular and perhaps he was lucky to have many homes and he kept a very low profile. But, but he did state, and I wish it was, uh, more, more, uh, uh, under pains and penalties and perjuries. But I think with what you read was a supplement, which it was going to be introduced into the record. This is the owner giving his opinion, uh, that he was there, he treated it as rental property and he was living there in some capacity. There was a question of, does it have to be primary use? No, no, it doesn't have to be primary use. And it looks like he had, this gentleman and his wife had multiple homes, but, uh, I'm not convinced that, that the evidence hasn't been, uh, I think it's circumstantial and it, and it conflicts with what the seller had, had said. So I'm coming out in favor of, of lack of abandonment for twenty-four months, I just don't see it having been proven. And all the records, you know, the proving and negative, I agree that rental people don't actively participate with these voting polls and register and so on a- as well as we should. And I think counsel has done, uh, uh, and, and, and his clients have done a good job to generate the leases and statements. So on balance, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, of the commissioner's report and respectfully against the, the request for rescission.
This is, this is a, a hard case, to be honest with you. I, you've done a really good job filling in the gaps on the occupants, I have to say. It was, it seemed much clearer to me when we started this than it is now. I, I'm not overwhelmed by the letter. I mean, we have certainly, in other contexts, seen more clear statements from former property owners who again have no reason, they have no skin in the game. But, uh, maybe they just take dictation better, but, uh, there are clearer statements that address the continued use. The fact that the, the building was, uh, it could function as a two-family isn't the question. And, and whether it had two kitchens and two hot water heaters and everything, it's where people are actually living there. And that, that has become a very confusing issue, I have to say. It, it, I don't see any reason why, why the sellers would, would misspeak other than they're, they're treating this somewhat casually or maybe they don't remember. Certainly wouldn't claim to remember where I was twenty-five years ago. By, by the same token though, it, it's, it's hard for me to believe that so many people think the building was empty for so long. I, I mean, there's clear evidence that some people were living there at some point in time. And in fact, there's evidence that someone was living there most of the time we're talking about. There were very few years where no one has been able to show us that no one was living there. So I, I'm really having trouble on the discontinuance issue. But I, I have to say that with all due respect to the building inspector, building commissioner, pardon me, it's an old habit, it'll die hard. I disagree with the reading of, of one four seven four. And, and I really, really hate to base conclusions like this on punctuation. Particularly commas, which are spread out liberally without anyone knowing when they're appropriate. Uh, I don't think that detached garages are included in the definition of footprint. I, I think that, uh, it, to me, it's number one, a, a very compelling argument that they specifically talk about attached garages. As opposed to just garages, number one. Number two, I, I don't read it as three separate clauses. I, I read it as perhaps two clauses. With the, the first clause being, all fully enclosed portions of a building, including attached garages, porches, solariums. And similar fully enclosed extensions, those are attached, attachments, those are attached, and accessory annexes. I think they are talking about accessory annexes with the word similar as attached annexes. Which are not either solariums, porches, or something else. Whether they're your workshop or your pottery shop or whatever. I think that the definition contemplates only things that are attached to the principal building. I appreciate the calculations that were done, uh, because I think there's at least some common ground on what the footprint would be. Depending upon whether the detached garage is included or excluded, that seemed to be unnecessarily complicated early on and I'm glad that was sorted out. But I think based on my reading of that section, I would not uphold the building permit. Without even having to get to the issue of, of the discontinuance, which I think is a very muddy issue.
So I'll add, um, I thought you did a fantastic job filling in the details that Mr. Jenta presented. I, I found compelling evidence that there was an abandonment, that's my personal observation of it. However, compelling doesn't always make the standard because there was a rebuttal. And what he added to it and the objective perspective of the former owner, um, was, was compelling to me as well. So, um, and the logic that tenants don't do the same thing as a property owner or a single-family residence resonated with me. So I think with all that information presented, I don't think you made the burden of, you introduced it, and now they had a rebuttal. It was convincing, but I don't think it met the standard, so I, I, I can't find abandonment. On the same vein, I totally agree with Peter. I think annex has to be attached. And it's just logical to me, the way I read it, the way I read the section, listening to Latin phrases, lack of Latin phrases. I, I just believe the annex has to be attached, uh, under this. The next section is not included. And, um, is the bylaw need work? Yeah, need work on this debt issue and that's for the planning board and town meeting to sort of take the first thing. So in this particular case, I was hoping people would work things out and hopefully still would, but I couldn't, uh, support, uh, the building permit in its current state of this. Based upon the word, I don't think the garage is included. So.
Not a majority vote. It requires unanimity to overturn.
So we, we sort of have an issue?
Take a minute, Howard.
No, 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 no.
Hey, listen, you know, umpires call balls and strikes as they see it and there's often, uh, sometimes disagreement. So, um, uh, to me, uh, to hear the building commissioner, uh, with his years of experience, uh, in, in the standard of deference. He's here in person to, to talk about it. It, it is inconsistent with, with some of the readings, uh, where detached garages are not included. But, um, you know, I see that comma as, as, as different, uh, and it can go both ways, I, I think what you said was interesting.
So.
That's how I come down, huh? Yeah, yeah.
We'll take a vote. So let's take a vote to uphold the building, the, the building permit or not? Or is that, what is exact motion of your? They should, I'll have a motion.
Okay, fair enough. So the, there's, there's the applicant, the applicant's has, uh, uh, applied for the appeal of the building inspector's, uh, uh, decision, permit. And, uh, and so that's, I believe that's the vote, is do we support the applicant's appeal?
What, what you, the request for relief though?
It's an appeal, I mean, we could, we could frame it as, as a motion to grant the appeal, we can vote on that, we can frame it as a motion to deny the appeal.
So, so why don't you frame, you seem to.
No, I, I, so I, I, I move that we vote to approve, to grant the appeal of the building inspector's, uh, decision in issuing building permit DC twenty-four dash eleven oh seven eight.
And the building permit should be revoked. So that's the motion.
That's the motion.
All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. The motion does not matter. We require a unanimous decision on the vote, so the matter is disposed of, we'll be issuing opinion. Your building permit is resolved, your appeal is resolved. I hope you talk, counsel, thank you so much for your participation, your learned articulation. Residents, neighbors, thank you so much for participating, it meant a lot and participating in your community is great. It, you gave us great insight into this decision. And so with a two-one decision, we did not, uh, get a unanimous decision. So at that point, the meeting is adjourned.
The meeting is adjourned?
No, the hearing, just the hearing, we have another hearing. We'll take a five-minute break.
Please, if you, if you spoke tonight, make sure you signed in so that.
I'd have to think about it.
I'd have to think about it.
Because every single family.
Joshua Schaller have applied for a variance to allow the divestment of a five-foot strip of land to the abutting property at 73 Pleasant Street. The divestment would make 282 Warren Street currently a conforming lot into a non-conforming lot with a build factor of 26.69, where a build factor of 20 or less is required in this section. 4.25 of the bylaw. The property is located in the single residence B, SRB district. Good evening. Please introduce yourself from the board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I'm Timothy Fraser from the law firm of Dane Torpey, 175 Federal Street in Boston. You may have expected to see my colleague, Kim Dooley, who's worked expeditiously with the board, Ms. Collins and Ms. Cleat. Ms. Dooley had a emergency, she's expecting her, her medical emergency was more important than mine, which occurred just a few hours ago. So you have me. It was a planned surgery, mine was, but I asked the board's indulgence as I just try to figure out which one of these combinations work.
Well, good luck with that, and I hope it works.
Appreciate it.
Excuse me for one second, Stephanie, can you ask them to just please?
Wants the door open?
We can crack the door.
Kind of open.
Yeah, kind of open. You can continue, we're just.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant Joshua Schaller and Stephanie Cox, who are also on the Zoom, seek a variance from compliance with section 4.2.5, the build factor of the zoning bylaw. The relief is being requested in connection with a proposed redrawing of the lot lines of two adjacent irregularly shaped lots. Those lots are 282 Warren Street and also 73 Pleasant Street. And the owners of that property, Jonathan and Jamie Chan, are also on the Zoom as well. So the lot configuration that we propose will allow 73 Pleasant Street, which is currently a non-conforming lot, to become compliant with the code. And it will also allow 282 Warren to become more compliant with the code. But the lot configuration, even though it doesn't involve any construction, it only involves the exchange, the exchange and the change of boundary lines. It does violate the build, build factor for the 282 lot. And I'll get into more detail as to how that occurred. Just for some history on the property. So the applicant owns and resides at 282 Warren Street. Its assessors parcel 41-41. It's situated in a single residence B district. It was created in 1944, so far prior to the adoption of the build factor. And at the time it was created, it was created in a highly irregular shape. And I believe the board does have the plans, thank you. Where it includes a five-foot wide by 146-foot long strip of land. And that strip of land provides 282 Warren Street with direct access, access to Pleasant Street. So it kind of makes it a through lot just by that little strip of land. And my understanding is, is that that was some kind of carriage alley or something that made sense back in the time when 282 Warren would need direct access or wanted direct access.
Can I just, so I'm trying to, so that there is a strip, but then on this plan that's dated June 30-24, it seems like there's a, it's all the way down to, to get access to Pleasant, you would have to follow it down like this. Is that what this was originally designed for?
That is correct.
Because in, in the presentment, it wasn't clear to me, I'm looking at the, the sketch plan, and it's clear to me that, that, that would have been used for that. So that at one time, it's your understanding that the owners of 282 Warren Street had the right of access both over the 75-foot strip as well as down the, the longer strip. I'm not seeing a measurement here to get.
So that is the 75-foot strip? And, and maybe there is a, another illustration, Mr. Goldman, that might be a little bit more easy to follow. It's, it's color-coded. It's attached to the memo that was submitted. One more page, that's it right there, just one more page forward, I think, maybe two. That's it right there. So in that diagram, you can see the depiction of the strip that's in question. It's red and it's long and it's attached to the rest of the boundary line of 282 Warren Street, which is also depicted in red on that diagram that you see there.
Well, to be frank, I'm seeing two, two, two shapes, one in red and one in yellow.
That's correct.
But I'm not following the, the connection on this.
You're, you're, you're one plan ahead. Go take the colored, yeah, go one page back.
One page back.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Goldman, you're, you're on the proposed page, correct. If you go back one page in that memo, you can see the current lot line. My apologies, there you are. So what you see there is how the lot lines currently lie today. And that depicts the irregular shape of the 282 Warren Street lot outlined in red with that direct access to 72, through Pleasant Street by, by way of that carriage strip. Just to continue, in 1958, the adjacent lot, 73 Pleasant was created. So basically, it was just kind of placed right next to that sort of carriage strip with a 75-foot affrontage. So with the passage of time, 282's necessity to use that carriage alley went away and so did their need for access or direct access to Pleasant Street. And so in 2007, the then owners of the properties entered into a cross easement agreement where they attempted to memorialize the use of the land as the way that they had been using it at that point, which is that 73 Pleasant was really making use of that little carriage strip. And 282 Warren was no longer using it. As well as, there's a small easement, and you can see it just to the, where the property lines connect in the back. And that yellow easement was also in favor of 282 Warren. Basically, just kind of allowed them a little bit of a slant to get to that, to, to, to get to that carriage alley.
So to configure to the plot plan and we just beat that one?
That's correct. Yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. And so what those owners tried to do in 2007 is just kind of memorialize the way that the property was being used by the owners at that time. The current owners are now seeking to permanently redraw the lines and to have fee ownership of both of the shapes of those parcels. And as I earlier stated, you know, that accomplishes three things. Number one, it creates a conforming lot out of 73 Pleasant where it's currently non-conforming. And that's because it has that 75-foot affrontage that it had always had. By adding the carriage strip, it would give it the required 80. But it also creates a more conforming lot out of 282 Warren in that it reduces the build factor, which is right now, I think it's up in the 50s, 56 actually. And we can get to that in great detail. So the build factor was established in 19, I'm sorry. The build factor was established far after 1944. And basically, what the intent of it was, was to, or is to, limit the degree of irregularly shaped lots. So that's exactly what we have here. This 282 Warren Street lot, lot in the way that it's shaped would have never flown if the build factor was in effect. And you can see the way the build factor is calculated is it takes the lot perimeter squared over the actual lot area. And then once you have that fraction, you divide that fraction by the actual lot area and required lot area. But really what's important to note there is that a large part of that calculation is the lot perimeter squared. So if you look at the lot perimeter of 282 Warren, it's, it's huge if you include that carriage strip. Yet that carriage strip doesn't offer much actual square footage at all. So it really throws the build factor formula for 282 Warren Street up into the 50, 52.6 is exactly, is where it is. And by the same token, just by eliminating that small little piece of land, the carriage strip, you reduce the build factor by half. And as you can see in our application, reducing the build factor by half only brings it down to 26.69. It doesn't bring it down to the required 20. But we make 282 Warren far more conforming by doing this. So we think that the relief that we're requesting is warranted based on the fact that there is a substantial hardship based on the irregular lot shape of 282 Warren. We looked around and kind of just at some of the different plot plans and property boundaries based on the assessors' map. And we're hard pressed to find a lot in a residential district as irregular as, as this one. We think that the relief can also be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The two lot reconfigurations involve two private lots there at, in a residential district, two single-family lots. It's just an exchange of property rights between two private owners. And again, pointing to the plain language of the build factor by law, you know, the goal is to reduce the degree of the irregular shape of the lot. So we think that by granting this variance, we're actually supporting the intent of the code and thereby supporting the public good and the town's intentions in enacting that. So in summary, we respectfully request that the board consider granting the variance to allow the lot reconfiguration such that the build factor of 282 Warren Street is reduced from 52.26 down to 26.69, still non-conforming. But we think the improvement to the build factor balanced with the intent of the code and also the de minimis amount we are away from the requirement of the code warrants such relief. I'll take questions. Obviously, there's no architect involved, as I stated earlier, there's no construction or anything.
Do you have a copy of the very, the easement they entered into? Lot line? I'm talking about the actual.
I do not have a copy of the recorded easement, I have the recording information. Yeah, I have the recording information and I can certainly provide that to the board, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
I guess my only question is, why?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, well, it, it's really to, just to clean up the shape of the lots and the respective interest of the parties. I mean, you know, 73 Pleasant Street folks are using this strip of land and something happened.
Right? Is the real reason to make 73 Warren a conforming lot? Like, I guess just bluntly speaking, everything you presented, everything here makes perfect sense to me. But if we're going to grant the variance, like, who's really being? If the applicant is 282 Warren and they don't plan on changing anything, are they really being aggrieved of anything by the way it is right now? I guess that's my.
Yeah, the hardship almost seems like it's self-created.
Yeah, so, so this is an agreement between the two property owners. And the reason why you have sort of the 282 as part of the variance is because as part of this agreement that nobody thought was going to change anything, that just happened to be the lot that was triggered. Had it been something with two, with 73 Pleasant, and as a matter of fact, working with Mr. Prandak, we actually thought that it was, then it would be 73 Pleasant that we'd be asking for the same thing for. So there, there really is, and I don't have sort of insight from the property owners as to the, you know, why they engage in these discussions, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have that insight, Mr. Legris.
Yeah, because I guess, I guess where I sit makes perfect sense, but I just don't see why.
I mean, if they want to do the swap, fine, they create, they're creating this issue. So is it, I, I don't understand the hardship.
And, and I guess when we looked at it, Mr. Chair, we, we looked at it from the point of how can this ever be corrected without a, you know, how can fee ownership ever be vested in the owners of 73 Pleasant for the piece of land that they've been using and the prior owners have been using for years? How can that ever occur without a variance being corrected?
But they still can use it.
But how can they ever have fee ownership of it? And, and how can 282 Warren, for that matter, ever make any use of that strip of land? I mean, it's not wide enough that any of us could even lay across it the long way. And it's 150 foot, you know, 150 feet long.
Well, I guess that, I think the world will, I mean, I think the presentation was excellent and I, I think the, the analysis is good. But in other words, why, why come to the board for variance when it's self-created? That right, for many years, how many, 50, 100 years, there's been these cross easements and life has gone on and they've used it. That is, Pleasant Streets used the strip. So what's prompting the variance? And I just wonder what, what might be the precedent here? This one feels, feels to be innocuous, no one's being hurt. But you're self-creating it, you're coming to the board, transferring fee ownership in, in a strip when for the past significant years has been easements in place to make it work. transferring fee ownership uh, in in a strip when for the past significant years has been easements in place to make it work.
Uh, is there any intention of the owners of seventy-three too?
So? Uh, my 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 understanding is they actually just moved there, so um, I do not believe there's any intention.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is something's gonna be built on seventy-three and they wanna have a conforming law. So I would imagine, and and I I understand this is beyond your representation and your knowledge. I imagine that it's those folks who are driving the train here.
Right, but they're not here, but I'm wondering, but but yes, that's sort of my sense too.
Yeah.
What's the ulterior motive, but they're not the applicant?
Because they don't own the land.
If it were to sustain those decisions, most parties are are here on Zoom, Mr. Coleman.
I wanna read into the record just comments from the municipal boards, so we cover all these things, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Fire department approves. Uh, Department of Public Works have no comment, defer to the building commissioner and planning board to make a determination. Uh, the building commissioner reviewed the application. I agree that the relief in the form of variance only for the lot of two eighty-two is required due to the creation of a new lot which exceeds the current build factor requirements prescribed under four point two point five. The office has no objection or other comments related to the proposal. Uh, public health had no comments and the police department had no comments. I have no other comments from any butters and neighbors. Uh, planning board had no comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So if uh, people on Zoom would like to comment?
We want to hear a break from Mr. Jonathan Chan. Promote him as a panelist?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Jonathan Chan. I'm the owner of uh, seventy-three Pleasant. Um, I apologize for not being in person. I was traveling this week and I just uh, flew back to Boston this eve- uh, earlier today. Um, the question of why, I just wanted to address that. So, you know, it it, in a way, I understand what you guys are saying, we are creating our own little hardship. But what's not shown on the survey plans are um, the trees that actually reside on the five-foot uh, strip of land. So there's quite a few um, eighty-something foot tall trees uh, that um, that sit on that five-foot by seventy-foot strip of land. Um, it overhangs our detached garage, our driveway, and then the neighbor on the other side of us is a newly built patio. Um, just a few years back, there was um, some weather incidents and then we had some branches that fell and it hit uh, one of our cars. And then we got together and and uh, subsequently figured out a way how to remove the tree and then financially um, divvy up the cost. But then looking into it, we remembered there was this easement and then that's when it motivated us that, you know, while this easement is there and, you know, it doesn't really, um, you know, we have a good relationship with our neighbor, but it does cause undue liability for um, the Schaller family and our family. So if something were to happen on, say, the uh, neighbor adjacent to us, um, it, we're just not sure who's liable for or who's who's really uh, um, responsible for maintaining those trees, et cetera. So that's really our driving motivation.
Taking a look at the easement, see if it addresses any of those things, but thanks for explaining that issue.
You're welcome.
So so I guess, is anybody else up there who wants to state this, Mr.?
There are no more.
Okay, so the problem I'm having is granting a variance for no reason. I I I don't see the hardship dictating that we vary the bylaw. I I just, I'm I'm, you're you're creating the issue. I asked Nick to read the easement that's recorded and has normal indemnification language that addresses insurance and, well, maybe not insurance, but liability. Um, and that there's trees and they overhang, well, yeah, I understand, and they would like to own it and do what they wanna do with it and insure it. But I don't think that's grounds for a variance.
And is the intent, Mr. Chairman, then, to understand that the code would never allow this lot to change? Because anything that happens to two eighty-two is gonna change, do something to the build factor.
I I have to see what the hardship is. So you you you've presented an irregular lot, you presented historically what has happened, that parties worked out some type of an agreement that there's no use of this strip there. So I can't speak to facts that aren't presented to me of whether a variance for something based upon some other finding or presentation. I I don't.
I'm just looking at it from from that logic, it seems like any variance or almost would be self-created. For example, if two eighty-two Warren wanted to do anything on their lot because of the build factor, wouldn't they always trigger a need for a variance?
Perhaps, but maybe that's the hardship.
That's the hardship.
Well, well, no, actually, they wouldn't because they'd be a pre-existing.
Because it's pre-existing.
Yeah, I mean, uh, two eighty-two has other issues. I mean, they're they're non-conforming in a number of respects.
Frontage as well.
To setbacks and, you know, it just occurred to me, I I understand what you're saying. I I I think on the scale of of hardship and other physical qualities affecting the lot, I I mean, I think this one is so far off the charts in shape of lot.
Yes.
That I have a lower threshold for hardship. Because I can't imagine there's gonna be a whole lot of cases like this coming before us. So I don't think there's a lot of hardship. So personally, I would be inclined to do it, but I think it has to be done very carefully because there's a lot of non-conformities on that lot. You don't want to bless this build factor forever. So you're you're basically freezing what's there now in time. So there would be a variance for for from the build factor to permit the continued existence of what's there now at a level of a build factor of twenty-six point six two. So if they wanna build a deck or detached garage or something, it's not covered by this variance. They're they're not given free rein to ignore the build factor. Plus, they're not given a variance for all of the other non-conformities. So this is gonna be some screwed up law going forward because it's gonna be partially governed by a variance and partially governed by pre-existing non-conformity stuff.
How does the variance impact the non-conformity?
Well, they're gonna have to come back and get a variance if they wanna build anything because they don't have frontage.
They're gonna do that anyway, though, right?
Right. So this is why I say this is always gonna be a screwed up law.
So I guess the question is.
So we accomplishing anything by doing this? I don't know.
So they're gonna come back regardless of anything you wanna do because of this all messed up?
Yeah.
But at least at that point in time, they come in here and set plans and they say, we wanna do this addition, we wanna do this deck.
We have this hardship.
We have this hardship because we have such a messed up law.
No, I I think you have to parse it out and and if they're going into the side yard, then maybe it's a question of, are you able to do that as an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming building? As opposed to, do you need a variance? That's what I say, I mean, it's gonna be complicated for these folks to do anything on this lot. On the road, but I I understand what you're saying. I don't disagree with you.
So you're balancing, so I agree, you you win on the the regular shape.
Right.
But I don't think there's any hardship shown.
I I could see how you would reach that.
Just nothing shown, so I I think.
Well, you know, there's there's there is the the issue of of, you know, liability and.
That's generally not what hardship is.
I understand that, but.
So can I ask a question? So what would be the 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 hardship if the board said no to the variance tonight? What would change in the lives of the of the of your client?
Well, the we'd be subject to these cross easement agreements, I guess, into perpetuity. There would be the the liability issues that Mr. Chan mentioned would just continue and that would be.
Right, but but it it's been part of 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 the character of these lots for how many years now?
Two thousand and seven.
Well, these 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 owners are relatively new and not, I guess, uh, so amenable to the cross easement arrangement.
These owners have been there for twelve years.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chan, uh, the Schallers and Mr. Chan?
I don't know the Schallers.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So so the point is, is the one thing Mr. Chan talked about was the law potential liability. And I think that's covered under that agreement that was negotiated and executed and and directs, addresses it. So I I see a more compelling case. I'm trying to build a new home. Here is what I have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then I I do believe, and I can't articulate it perfectly, but when you grant a variance to a portion of this property, you are impacting something to do with the non-conformity. So now we have this blended mess that you're talking about.
Right.
But if you just had the non-conforming property, then you have the right to do certain things with it, so.
With respect to two eighty-two and then with respect to seventy-three, let's say, so how does that affect? So that would just, both would be continued to be pre-existing, non-conforming lots? And what the board's position is that when a plan comes before you with respect to those lots, at that time you demonstrate the hardship with respect to those plans?
Or whatever they're trying.
Depending what they're looking to do, I mean, with any luck, what they're doing could be handled by a special permit.
So and and I guess in the context of that, we're thinking construction plans, but aren't the plans to redraw these boundary lines, similar plans to accomplish something that can now not be accomplished?
No, no, you're running something that requires a variance or they can't do it. Uh, so if you if you change the lot lines, you're you're creating something. Um, so no, I I don't. I I don't think I agree with that.
No, I. I I mean, to me, part of the hardship in and its conjectural and its future is that the owner of two eighty-two will never be able to satisfy the build factor because they have this crazy lot and and you know, they'll never be able to build anything of any size. If the house that's sitting there now already violates it, it seems to me hard to believe that you would build something smaller. But if you if you get rid of this.
One issue.
Well, if you're at least reduce it.
Good job, yeah.
You know, but again, I I'm not voting on it.
I'm I'm just torn because the showers have been this long, and the furnace has been this long since twenty thirteen. And here we are today, and I'm I'm all for limiting weird lots in every way, shape and form. All for that.
No pun intended.
Yeah, yeah. But I just can't, from a procedural standpoint, I just can't see how there's a hardship when.
Self-created. So that that's what's troubling with, yeah.
Because I think it was Peter who said, like, come in, come in here and say, I'm building a new house and I have this problem.
See if we can work it out through a special permit, we'll weigh the factors.
So I think it's a procedural issue more than a logical issue, in my head at least.
Yeah, I think we all agree it's an irregular lot, uh, that that there's no real detriment to 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 the surrounding properties. The question is, why are we here? It's it's self-created and you've got these easements in place that are working.
I mean, we are talking about a seven hundred, approximately seven hundred and thirty feet is the strip compared to two twenty-five, I believe, the easement plan from two thousand and seven. So is the hardship that someone's paying tax on five hundred feet that they don't have the benefit of using? I mean, I don't know if there's.
But they are using it with easement.
But they're not as a practical matter, and to all appearances, it's part of the other property and I assume they never go back there.
I think the, I think the backyard was eventually done because of offense placement as well.
Yeah.
For the ease of not using offense, so I don't know, is it pressing? Can we can we claim the hardships?
Taxes.
For taxes?
We have no evidence of that at all.
And the tax would be pretty minimal on a small strip of land.
Grasping for straws, trying to, trying to help some neighbors more than anything, but. Because I didn't see anything in here about taxes or anything.
Yeah, the tax liability, my understanding, is paid by the two eighty-two. There's no tax sharing or.
The taxes on that small piece of land is not proven as de minimis.
Yeah, it's really the deprivation of the use of it and never, never will be able to use it. And so by that part.
Is it fenced? No?
Um.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Not the, not the carriage strip, no.
Not the five feet.
The backyard is fenced, but not off a little bit, the apartment.
And so for them to ever be able to dispose of this piece that they'll never be able to use, I guess they won't be able to do that either because that would require a drawing of the property line.
They'd have to tear down the house in order to get rid of the five-foot strip.
So really that that's the hardship, is that there's nothing you can do with it. Can't sell it, can't, it's not wide enough for a picnic table.
Is there a way to accomplish that, that got such a rougher strip, plus more land in a way that the property factor would be conforming?
Like convey the five-foot strip plus a little L-shaped down the back?
Plus something else to make it.
I'd have to play with the calculation to see how that would affect it because now we'll be reducing lot area as well. So, I mean, that's the denominator. Yeah, I I guess, I guess that that presumes.
Think about it?
We need a variance, right?
Yes, if the if the board would be amenable to a deferral and and could come back and um, answer that that question and and some others, we would certainly uh, accept a deferral.
I I have no problem, you've taken the time and hired counsel to prepare an application. Uh, you have two parties that would like this to happen.
He is counsel.
What?
He is counsel.
No, they hired counsel.
Oh, these guys?
Yes, the two people up there, the the, the parties up there. So so um, we wanna respect that. Uh, I I I'm not inclined to grant the variance tonight. Um, I think you should present an argument of what the hardship is and perhaps follow that lead of rejigging the the property conveyance or the proposed conveyance. Um, or we can allow you to withdraw without prejudice.
Uh, I'm happy to report back to the board next month on our findings and then uh, seek a determination at that time from the board, if that's okay.
I mean, I I'd rather prefer, recommend not deciding on the variance of give you some flexibility to do something in the future because I don't know what your client wants to do.
And I can, I can get some insight into that and that might be helpful.
Uh, we don't want a self-created variance, uh, hardship, that sort of thing. Everybody in agreement here?
Yes.
All right, so a motion to continue to.
I'll promote it.
Like, we have a meeting seven-thirty that's gonna be contentious probably, so put you on at like eight o'clock.
Okay.
Okay? Daphne?
So I have a, I have, yeah. Can you do that? You're gonna have very busy next month.
Did you schedule the?
One thing is that.
The court meeting?
The next meeting is March twentieth.
Oh, keepers.
And.
He has a conflict.
What happened? No. And you have, already you have Cyril Colgate is coming back, we'll have you guys back, two eighty-two. And scheduled for next week, you have thirty Rivard Road, seventy-six Fair Oaks, and you have three thirty-nine Chestnut Street to the um, comprehensive permit.
Guess where I am?
I'm busy.
I'm out of town that week. Yes, so anyway, that has nothing to do with you. We have five members of the board.
But they just need to know.
There's a motion on the table.
Yes.
There's a motion on the table to continue.
We need to adjourn, second, second the motion.
All favors, aye?
Aye.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you for the open meeting.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in March. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, yeah.
Motion to adjourn, adjourn, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm back.
So what happened? It's uh, just a cataract surgery.
Oh, cataract.
Well, I was talking to Daphne, she was telling me it was your sister.
My sister loves it.
I'm telling you, you got.